Testimony oath for presenters. Please be advised anyone that's here today to present before Commissioner's Court. You are under oath. Public comments? We have one public comment from Ms. Elizabeth Villalobos. Ms. Villalobos? Yes, ma'am, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, my name is Elizabeth Villalobos. Excuse my attire, but I work as a district and today was our workday, so I'm in a workday attire. A little bit about myself just real quick. I'm a schoolteacher. I've been here for 28 years. It's my 28th year in the district and teaching third grade. My parents are Lupe and Benito Garcia. My dad used to work with the county, with Huatinsagado, with precinct two, for a long time. Lived on 13th Street. So I just want to let you know who I am, my parents, who they are, and that they worked. My dad has worked with the county also. I'm here today because I live out in Espacosa subdivision. I live in the county. I don't live in the city. So sometimes I feel some of us in the county don't get a lot of the same services as the people in the city do. June 18th, I believe. I do a lot of walking in my area because some of the area is a little secluded and I like that because it's lonely, it's private. And I only worry really about snakes because it's rugged and wooded. But this time, I was attacked by dogs that came chasing after me one day, one morning. Terrifying to try to have to turn around and see dogs running after you, not knowing what they're going to do and just knowing that there's nothing for me to climb, there's nothing for me to hide behind, and not having any kind of weapon on me to try to defend myself and just anticipating what they could do. And so, I'm here because I didn't make a police report. I follow the steps. I'm into following rules and what do I need to do? What are my steps to ensure that something like this doesn't happen to anybody else? And just because this is what I do. This is, I'm active, I try to be active and I don't want dogs to tell me that. Literally, I've been there for almost 20 years and these animals that are there have maybe moved in a year ago, two years ago. I know that we as a county don't have dog catcher or means, because I did check on that. But I kind of feel like we as county people still have rights, should still have services. We all live in the same rectangle. I just don't live in the circle of Carrizo. I don't think that I should be limited or others should be limited in the kind of services that they get. Or fear for just walking down the street in my neighborhood because of loose dogs that are not fenced in and taken care of. I don't know how things are done. Was that my turn? But I know that there could be grants to help pay for things or a pound that could be done because I know that the issue is also increasing availability with dogs. But I'm just here to ask for assistance so that something that has happened to me doesn't happen to others because there's children who also play out in the neighborhoods, ride their bikes. And so, I would hate for a dog to come from someone who might not want to take responsibility for it because that's happened with another set of dogs in the area that the neighbor there says, well, they're not mine, they just got dumped here, I don't know. And I said, well, they're coming from your property, so they're still yours. If you're allowing them to stay on, in your yard, in your house, even though you're saying you're not feeding them, they're still yours in a way. And so, no one wants to take responsibility and I'm just someone who doesn't let things just slide because someone can say, well, we don't have a service for you. I'm just like, well, there has to be, there has to be a solution. There's not always just that open-ended, there has to be a solution. So I'm just here to ask for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villalobos. Have a good day. 1.6, approval of minutes of regular meeting July 15, 2024. Are there any questions regarding the minutes? I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1, informational information regarding request for budget hearings, precinct two.
Ms. Villalobos, I put this on the agenda, asking for the court to see if we can have at least two days to review the budget prior to the last day when it comes up and the very day to approve it. I would like to see if we can set two days to go over the proposed budget.
Well, you're going to get a proposed budget. I have to file the proposed budget by August the 14th?
August.
August the 15th, excuse me. That's a proposed budget, Commissioner. You don't have to approve on that budget. It's called a proposed budget. So I will file that proposed budget with Mr. Garcia. I will make sure and ascertain that I will give you, Commissioner Ducahua, Commissioner Juan Carmona, and Commissioner Orenda a copy. That's the proposed. You look at that proposed budget. If you don't like what you see on there, if you have comments, questions, or remarks, we still do have another public hearing, which is where the public's allowed to come in and you can make your recommendations, your changes on what you want in that budget. That budget is not finalized until we as a Commissioner's Court unanimously or majority vote on that budget. So you will have a copy of that proposed budget that I am working on. As we speak, I have about two more appointments with elected officials to go over that budget and I will give you guys a copy of that proposed budget as to what I'm proposing based on the one-on-one budget workshops that I've had with each of the elected officials thus far and you will get a copy of that budget, proposed budget.
Well, based on our auditorium, he said that we were going to have it on the day that it was going to be approved. So that's why my question was, are we going to have ample time to look at that?
Go ahead, Mr. Pereda. The floor is yours.
No, I...
Is that what we did last year? You were presenting in the room?
Okay, but what happens is that, okay, she has to file August 15th. You all get a copy of it. The only requirement is to have one public hearing and that is 25 days later by law. You have to have a budget hearing. After the budget hearing, Commissioner's Court acts on it and makes any changes that you all want to propose, any changes, and that's the one you vote on. You vote on the changes and then you vote on the final approval. Once you finish with that, you go into the approval of the tax rate, which can't be done until the budget's approved. And that's 25 days later, which is August, I mean September 9th.
How do you want to go to? I don't want to go to what I would ask. As you were, as you doing, you came and ignored the request that I would ask about having it right before we would have, and then you said it was only, it was the day of approval of the budget.
No, I gave you all the final copy.
No, sure, we didn't get it. We got it on that day.
No, you got a proposed budget.
But it was changed.
But that's...
You gave us one budget, then we have another budget. Which budget are we going to go with?
Whatever.
That was what happened last year.
Okay, this year, you're going to get one on August 15th. No changes until the date September 9th. You all come up with the changes and that's what gets approved. And that's the only requirement by Saban.
3.1, approval of bonds. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Garcia, I wish you'd noted under the August 16th.
August 15th.
August 15th, we're going to have that prior to us approving the other, the original. Correct?
Correct.
You're going to get a copy, you're going to get a copy of the proposed budget that I'm going to file with Mr. Garcia, which by the way is a public record, so the public can get it, you can get it, anybody can get it, and you're going to get a copy of that.
I just don't want to get it.
August 15th. Oh, last year, we got it, what?
Right, Friday.
Five, 10 minutes before?
Well, that's why I'm saying if you're agreeing that the 16th, the 15th, you're going to get it on the 15th. That's all, that's all I'm asking, to make sure that we get it on the 15th.
No, you got it on August 16th because it gets filed on the 15th, 16th, they make copies, whatever. But whatever changes that everybody proposed, that's the changes that were made.
I understand.
It wasn't, so, okay, so this year, there are, what you're saying is you're not, you're not going to make any changes before then.
August 16th.
You're going to get it, you have to work, you have to act on the proposed budget.
3.1, approval of bonds. We do have two bonds. One is for the district clerk's office and the other one is for the county clerk's office for deputy district clerks. I got a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ducahua. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.1, discussion and appropriate action mandate regarding district courtroom utilization in the historical courthouse. Commissioners, as you can see, Ms. Madi, where's Ms. Madi? We have had several complaints. I do have Ms. Madi here as district clerk, just in case we need to have any testimony on her, from her in regards to this particular issue. We have had complaints from sheriff's office, we've had complaints from constituents. We've also, I believe Ms. Pat Gonzalez advised me, she advised you, Commissioner Carmona as a fire chief in Dimmitt County in regards to the issues and concerns that have been ongoing as the 365th Judicial District courtroom has been conducted in that smaller room in the historical courthouse. We were advised that approximately a week or two ago, we had an individual that nearly passed out and almost had to require medical help because he had diabetes and he was in that room and that room's extremely hot. I'm not sure if you guys have been in that room, but the fire marshal had to come down. As you can see in your packet, you have a report there from the fire marshal out of La Salle County who, emergency management department advised us, the Texas Department of Emergency Management advised us to contact them because there was concerns regarding the use of that room, how many people are on that room. And as you can see, there's a capacity of 10 people in that room. They measured it. Ms. Gonzalez was there, our county attorney, Mr. Gonzalez, was there, sheriff's deputy was there, a clerk was there, my emergency management was there, and I was called to be there, so I was there. He did advise us that our commissioner or our fire chief or whoever Mr. Carmona has appointed as the fire marshal here would have to be the one, if not, we have to call the Texas Fire Marshal to shut down that courtroom because based on the measurements, only 10 people can fit there. We went round and round about, about who has jurisdiction there. They advised us that you had jurisdiction because it's a county-owned property. Give me a second. It's a county-owned property. And so, we, the emergency management advised us to call an outside source, which is La Salle County. And the alternative, call the Texas Fire Marshal. It's my distinct understanding, we have, Melissa, you're here with Judge Abuska's office, I suppose, representing him. I haven't been in that courtroom, but I have been advised that there's about, at any given time, 20, how many, Ms. Madi, 30, 40 people at one time in that room? As you can see, there's a capacity max of 10 people. Furthermore, I've had complaints from our own employees. As you all are well aware, that the break room there is utilized by all the employees in that courthouse. Now, during court days, they're not allowed to utilize it because that's where the sheriff's office holds the inmates, sometimes five to 10 inmates at a time in that break room. And as you can see with this fire marshal's report, there should only be two inmates at one given time, given that they have restraints. In the hallway, based on the measurements of the hallway, there's approximately 39 people that can be in the hallway. As of today, based on the information that I was given from the individuals that were present that day, we are out of ordinance, we are a fire hazard because of the way that it's being conducted. I will put on the record that I have contacted, corresponded with Judge Abuska's office to offer him this particular courtroom and the district courtroom on the third floor, to no response. Judge Abuska has decided to continue to have court in the historical courtroom, which is no problem. However, in order for us to continue to allow him to have court there, it has to be by these mandates that have been given to us. If not, that whole courthouse will be completely shut down, meaning the county clerk's business will be shut down, the county attorney's business will be shut down because we're not adhering to fire marshal's ordinance or rules. With that being said, I was advised, I was told by the fire marshal that this needs to be an agenda item in regards to what the Commissioner's Court wanted to do in regards to either completely shutting that courtroom down and mandating the 365th to conduct court in this courthouse. Because I want to make it very clear to the public, anybody that's watching on YouTube, that this courthouse is very, very new, if you will, compared to the historical courthouse. I've sat down and I've spoken to Ms. Gonzalez, a district clerk, very capable. I've talked to Judge Flores, who's the other district judge. She has advised me and Ms. Madi that she's willing to work with Judge Abuska and his staff to make sure that we have court here because this is a very capable courtroom as well as a third floor. And I don't want the community to feel that the Commissioner's Court or the judge is forcing Judge Abuska, his staff, the district clerk, to conduct court in a room that the fire marshal has, based on the way it's being used, that it's unsafe. I was advised that before every single, it's public record, but every single court, district court, that Judge Abuska does put on the record that they are in that small room because the county judge and the Commissioner's Court refuses to allow them to use the courtroom upstairs. And I would beg to differ. We are not using that room. This court voted not to because we are not ADA compliant because as you know, the elevators are not working and they're still not working. Excuse me?
They haven't been working for a while.
Correct.
And I have approached the court about having them repaired.
Correct. And we cannot use that courtroom because we are not ADA compliant. So with that being said, this is an agenda item that's on the court before you all to decide how you want to proceed forward, moving forward.
Judge Mia?
Go ahead.
Judge, on the inspection and as I advise Mr. Gonzalez and Mrs. Gonzalez, for the fire marshal to get placed here, so that would be, because I call the state fire marshal, Mr. Ramon Garcia from the Valley, and his advice was, since it was a county building, it would be considered kind of like a conflict of interest, being that the judge Abuska was already protesting the courthouse. So I advise Mrs. Gonzalez and Mr. Gonzalez to call the city fire department for any issues. We called them the last time that the air conditioning went out. Because I didn't want to go and make a report and then come for them to coming back at me and saying, you're doing this, you're going to the RT and you're overtaking over it. Because really what it looks, what the rule is, when a county building sits inside of a city limit, that city fire department has jurisdiction over that building. They come into the inspections, they come do the occupancy, and plus, the county doesn't have a farmer. We always call when somebody is, incidentally, has a sudden in the county. We call the fire marshal, either Mr. Garcia, or I go to the state fire marshal, it's an accident, or get the ones from Eagle Pass. But on that part of me not calling the fire marshal is solely based, I had talked to Mr. Alida about the occupancy, I talked to the fire chief about getting an inspection and to no avail. What, why, what, I have no idea. I have addressed the issue before about the air conditions, the wiring. As a matter of fact, I wrote a letter and it's here on the agenda, on my concerns of the building. And it's placed on the very last item, but I'm sure that I took pictures and everything and asking, I know I shouldn't be discussing this, but asking the court to take a step forward. My hands are tied, not as, as a fire chief, my hands are tied because I am, as well as, again, I explained to the county attorney, I'd rather have documentation from a city fire department than myself. And the administrator, Ms. Gonzalez?
You did press that with me, sir. Correct.
And I told him about the air conditioning is going bad and the last time I heard that we were going to repair, he stated that the thing on here in the court was that there was going to be a grant done.
That's correct.
And we're still, that we were going to wait for the grant, but I see it as, let's get it fixed and then go worry about the crack. Right? And my letter specifically states the concerns I have for the public. It's not that I'm not doing my job, I'm addressing it, but...
I don't think anyone's questioning you doing your job.
No, 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 but I mean, it might sound like it's our fire chief is...
I'm telling you what they told us on Friday, is that correct, Ms. Madi? I'm just simply repeating what they told me on Friday. I'm not trying to attack you, I'm not trying to offend you, I'm not questioning your ability to be the fire chief or the commissioner. That's not what I'm telling you. I'm telling you what they told me on Friday.
And another time...
I'm just repeating what they said. And I agree with you 100% that you feel like there is a conflict because we, the Commissioner's Court, voted to not allow Judge Abuska to use that courtroom. So I understand that you don't want to have a conflict enter, and that's completely understandable. I agree with you. And that would be good for maybe, I don't know if Ms. Madi knew that or not, because when I spoke to her on Friday and we were there with the fire marshal, that was not the understanding. So with that being said, I understand 100% that you don't want to have a conflict and very simple, we can just call the state fire marshal if we have this concern. I want to know what it is that you guys want to do because we are not in compliance, we are out of ordinance because this court is being held with 40, 30, 40 people in the courtroom. Ms. Madi has also advised me that her staff is being harassed by the inmates while Ms. Alida's working, or I'm not going to mention anybody's, excuse me, while her employees working there and the inmates are all piled up on each other there and they're being harassed by the inmates. That is no way for any of our employees to be working, any of the constituents of Dimmitt County to be working. I do agree with you that we do need to fix those problems. And the reason why we were holding off was because we had applied for a grant that I, as the chief budget officer of this county, thought if we get the grant, we can save Dimmitt County over $500,000 instead of it coming out of our general fund so that the taxpayers don't have to pay $500,000 and we get it for free out of a grant. Mr. Carzada in Salina and Mr. Pereda had a meeting with them last week and we just found out on Friday, and we're already getting ahead of ourselves, but I'll say it, the grant was given to another county. Therefore, we're going to have to take action now to make sure that the repairs are done. That's without saying, just as much as you don't want our constituents to be having to be passing out, I don't want them passing out too. Me and Ms. Madi discussed this, we're lawsuits waiting to happen. Everybody's lawsuit happy and somebody passes out there, it's going to go on the county. I want it to be repaired as well. I just figured that if we could save ourselves $500,000, not even, probably close to a million because the roof alone is $500,000, Mr. Orenda, when we went to go meet with the vendor, I mean, why not try to get the grant? Yes, Ms.? Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
I was with Judge Abuska. We weren't aware that there was...
Can you?
We were not aware that there was a meeting or something going on on Friday. We would have liked to know because had we known that we were not in compliance, we would have modified stuff and changed them. This is the first time that I'm hearing about this as the administrator. I wasn't aware that someone passed out. I wasn't aware.
I wasn't there.
I don't even know if the judge is aware. I would have liked that information to go to me or someone from the judge's office. And if it did, please let me know so I can address it at my office. Is there any questions you guys have for us that I might be able to answer for you?
Any questions? Any questions?
I've got questions for you.
Mr. Pereda?
How long have you, how long have we been working on this problem?
What problem?
With the ACs and all of that, but my suggestion is, let's go ahead and put it out so we can get that thing fixed and get it out of our system. We need to take action as it is. That's kind of been my recommendation. We're always holding off on everything, so you see, we got money, so let's go ahead and get it fixed.
Okay.
It's one vote, I'm sorry.
But we're not, we're not voting on that yet. That's another agenda item. Right now, what we're voting on is what we're going to do moving forward.
If we take action now, we'll be safe. If then, I'm filing a lawsuit against somebody over there because the judge is going to follow the orders.
I understand that, but right now, what we need to vote on is what we're going to do moving forward with the district courtroom. We're going to vote right now, an item, agenda item, whatever it is for, for us to fix, to repair, we'll get there. But right now, what we need to vote on is what we're going to do moving forward with the district courtroom being used in that little room.
When all this hap, when all this started happening, which was recently, the last two months, I guess?
I was not aware of all these issues, Commissioner Carmona, about the courtroom.
This way I'm asking.
And so, what happened is that the architect basically came up and told us there's a grant with the historical commission. And that's when we got everything together, applied, and we've been waiting on them to give us an answer because we thought we were going to be able to get it. And so, that would have saved the county money. And so, we just found out this past week that it's not going to happen. So that's going forward.
What we have to decide on, whether we have to take some, see all...
That's a few of them.
Right.
Even as, as we rely on the historical commission, I remember seeing it hitting court, that the grant was basically almost approved. All that you had to do was being done. However, we've been dealing with this problem and everybody here is aware, the state commissioners and the judge, we've been aware that this has been going on for a while. It's not two months, it's not, it's been going on for a while. So my thing is, and I approach you all, the air conditions don't work, they're not working, yes, sir? And look at, look at the bills on repairs, how many times? I sent cold comfort, sent train, the elevators, we sent a guy, he said we needed a new elevator and yet, we're just sitting on it.
I know, but he just...
Was there any that, Mr. Commissioner? I'm going to go ahead and we're going to go back on track. We can discuss that in another agenda item.
This is part of the discussion?
How is it part of the discussion? You're talking about repairs. I just need, I just need to know.
You found out that this was going on, it's been going on for a while.
I know, but I'm, right now, the discussion, the agenda item is what we're going to do with the courtroom. It's not about the repairs, we're going to get to the repairs.
No, I understand, but...
So I don't understand how...
But I'm just trying to clear for the...
We can, we can, exactly.
Judge, if it has already been brought up to Mr. Abuska's attention, then he...
Judge, if it has already been brought up to Mr. Alaskal's attention that he cannot hold court in that courthouse, and you guys voted between December and March to do courthouse, not to do it in there because it was not in a good standing.
We were not made aware, this is the first time I'm hearing about it this morning.
I know it had passed through commissioner's court, I was out sick, but I voted pass through commissioner's court.
In the little room?
No, not the little room. She's talking about that you guys were advised to not use the...
Second floor, yes, yes, second floor we were advised, and we followed that. It was the little room we were aware of.
And they asked you guys that you guys can use the courtroom, this different house, with the third floor. So if you would agree your proof, my motion is for him to have court either in this courthouse, in this courtroom, or in the third floor.
Let me clarify something, I'm trying to remind you.
Go ahead.
Please, uh...
I'm saying...
The judge is aware of the problem, we hear, uh, uh, this year.
I hear, I hear.
Here, here, and he was here, and we, we discussed all of this, so he's aware of the problem.
He's, he's aware of the problem, uh, and then...
But you just said that you weren't all aware, that you weren't supposed to be...
On the first floor, no, no, Commissioner, we were not aware, we cannot use the first floor. The first, the second floor, we were aware that there was problems with the AC and electrical.
I reminded him, Camilo, we can hold this building to take his choice on the first or the third floor, and he could use it.
Well, to be aware that we could use it, yes, but we're, you asked me about the issue on the first floor, we were not made aware that there was an issue on the first floor. That, that, yes, that's what I'm talking about, the issue on the first floor.
No, I didn't, I thought you were talking to me for aware of this one.
No, no, the first floor, this is the first time we're hearing about it.
Two more hours, you're locked?
Sorry, yeah, different rooms, but, um, yeah, had we been made aware, hey, you guys might not be in compliance, or hey, there's someone feeling sick, you know, we would have addressed it. And I would have appreciated had we gotten a call, hey, we're going to have a fire marshal, we're going to have a meeting, I would have been here myself. The way I came today, if the judge can't be here, I'll be here for him. But, um, we were not made aware of anything like that, until this morning that I found out.
I wasn't aware of it, I'll just, going to run up this right here.
Yes, sir.
Just so, uh, do you remember there was a third option in the convention center? So any motion by Commissioner or, uh, how should I put it, the convention center?
But the convention center has to be based on if there's events going on.
And so the other courtroom is based on, uh, the availability, so that he was offered the convention center as well, so that should be a part of the motion, that's what I'm recommending.
Judge, the problem I have, if we leave these other people there who are still not in compliance, but there's more than, than 10 people there in that building?
No, this is 10 in a room, Commissioner. There's not 10 in that room.
But still, if, if we're going to get somebody out of there, I think we need to start working on finding out building. If we're not going to repair it, find a building to work with all of these other people.
It's in the agenda for I am 3.24, we'll get to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Duca. The motion is going to be to... Commissioner Duca, a motion to mandate District Judge to conduct court in the annex courthouse, either on the first floor, third floor, or in the alternative, in the convention center.
I'm sorry, I have a question, I'm sorry, I may. So this requirement is we have to be under 10 people in that room, so we could conduct hearings still in the room as long as it's under 10 people?
Well, she's, she's...
I'm asking that.
That, uh, originally, that would be correct, however, since the motions on the floor that were requiring you guys to use it here now, you'd have to use the annex courthouse, which is the first floor, third floor, or the convention center, and it would be, um...
Based on approval, correct?
Uh, based on availability, excuse me.
And the approval, the commissioner's court votes?
No, it wouldn't have to come to the commissioner's court, because Commissioner Duca already put the motion that you guys are going to use this building, however, you just need to get, um, with the district clerk, district clerk's office, um, so that we can get with Judge Flores for the third, um, floor, which is a district courtroom, get with my staff to use this particular, um, room, which is the first floor, or we'll get with Mr. On Hill to, if you guys needed to use the convention center. And I will follow that up with an email, I will CC all the commissioners, I'll CC you, I'll CC, uh, email Judge Alaskal, and I'll lay out everything on there, um, as to what needs to be done in order to move forward.
Well, I can communicate with Vita for Judge Flores, sir.
That'll be perfect. I have a motion by Commissioner Duca, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
We have one opposition, that's Commissioner Juan Carmona. Motion carries. Thank you. 3.2, discussion and appropriate action, approval to use Bowman Field from September 23rd, 2024 to November 23rd, 2024, for soccer games to be held on Mondays and Wednesdays beginning at 6:00 PM, and a possible Saturday tournament from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Motion by Commissioner Duca. Second by Commissioner Urenda, is this, is there going to be a fee on this?
We are prepared to pay the rental and the, the, the court's deposit. We're prepared to do that, so we thank you for your generosity last year, but we are prepared to do that.
So she just needs to get with Jasmine? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.3, discussion and appropriate action, requesting county infrastructure ordinance, requesting street signs for 18-wheelers in Corizo Hill, Corizo Hill water supply.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mary Martinez, I'm the board president for Corizo Water Supply.
And Becky Owens is the office manager.
Um, I prepared a packet just showing where the 18-wheelers are parking on side roads. We have sewer and water infrastructure there. Our water infrastructure is more than 30 years old in some of these areas. I don't know exactly when that grant was put in, but we're figuring about 24 years for our sewer when the grant was put in to just run lines to everyone in Corizo Hill. Um, there's pictures in there showing where there's routes already created, even where, um, residents are having their, uh, trash pickup done. But what we're requesting is maybe an ordinance, I don't know what you would call it, it may be signage. We understand that they need to drive through there, uh, to conduct business or to conduct any kind of service, but we're worried, um, that there's going to be damage that we're starting to, we're starting to see as far as water, water leak rates. Well, I think we've had one sewer break where Commissioner Duca fixed Corizo Hill Drive. We had it right at the entrance of Corizo Hill Drive, and we had to break that cement with her permission. And, uh, now we've just got car each over it, but that was our, one of our main sewer line rates right there, and then we've had some water line rates, and we're finding that there at some parts, uh, talking about the water, uh, at least four feet down, so we're, and this has been a big concern, and we're trying to fix this, I don't know if there's something that y'all could consider.
I know, we're on, uh, on the parking, inside the, uh, we do have some main streets, like Corizo Hill Drive, and we have the, uh, Bendanza, you know, which is understandable for businesses, but inside the vicinity, right around where the neighborhood's are, that's where we have a lot of problems. It creates problems in general, but that's the area that maybe is supposed to be, there's a resident there, and they work for some trucking company. So whenever they come home for the weekend or during the week, they park their trucks, and we'll, on both sides of the streets, we have either water or sewer lines. So that's creating a lot of, uh, because of the wave and the, you know, the parking is going on, especially in the weekends, so that's causing a lot of problems, and it's costing us a lot of money for the workers there, which is kind of, they're going to park somewhere else, you know?
And if y'all would consider, I don't know, some of these vehicles might be, uh, parked and be loaded. I know that we have some, some residents that do, um, transport. We don't know, we can't determine if they're loaded or not, but, uh, we're financially strapped. We cannot do major repairs. That's why we're requesting sign-in or an ordinance or something. We did contact code compliance, they sent me over the sheriff, Casería, the Casería said, uh, go to the county, and then he'll reinforce whatever y'all suggest.
Judge, right on the entrance, the Corizo Hill Drive, Las Todillas Drive, Misskey Street, Valle Grande Street, Las Palmas Street, that one has oil businesses. You have jet, you have commission, petroleum, we have other businesses that have 18-wheelers. The last one we had to suggest is that they only use those roads, 1556 and Highway 83 to enter and exit out. And they can also use Luisa Chain and Zediza Streets, since it's in between those two. Other than that, I, I don't know, we can do 18-wheelers entrance on the rest of the streets, but those are the streets that have the businesses, that I checked so far. I need to go back and check again if that was a law.
What street is this, Ms. Martinez?
This on the top one, that is on, um, I want to say that, that's on Polias.
And you said that that's business, they don't...
And I understand that, that, you know, that the traffic during the day comes and goes because of businesses. But I'm kind of referring to the people that live there, they will park and just stay there, like all day, it's not just coming home. You know, they work for a company, or they come home from the weekend, and they just park their 18-wheelers there. And that's, you know, a lot of low underground lines. It's not really, it's not always like a shoulder and it's safe. That's what we're trying to do.
And I, I did say in our, in our packet that we're in agreement that they do have to pass through any road in Corizo Hill. We're just requesting no parking, no overnight parking, and of course, they have to do their, their, their transport, whatever, jet, and all those companies do have space to park inside.
And even here, one of those companies that you referred to, um, Valle Grande, um, they're going to pass, they even park one of our...
Yes, we had to put speed bumps and even that, at that...
Commissioner Urenda?
Judge, um, the other issue here is that, it is, to my understanding that if from fence line to fence line is considered county right-of-way, uh, we're liable for anything within that right-of-way, that's stationed there. But somebody was to come and rear-end one of those trucks, we're susceptible for loss, just like textile on, on, on these state roads. That's why everything takes out places out of the right-of-way, it's regulated before they place it. Uh, so that's probably the biggest safety concern for mine is we're allowing people to station or park their, especially oversight vehicles. Uh, we might be in a situation where they can come after us or be, for allowing them to stay, be parked on the, on the county, within the county right-of-way.
You know, some kind of signs or something in the streets, or, you know, start, at least with that, you know, something. But it's just not right.
And I'm hopeful that y'all can maybe help us, because I know if, if I were to park an 18-wheeler on 1556 or on Highway 83, uh, the Department of Hydrants is going to tell me we'll go right away through it. So I don't know if, maybe that's something that y'all can enforce with signage or an ordinance, but we need to keep them off of our infrastructure, because like I said, we're financially strapped, and that system is regulated.
I agree with you 100%, Ms. Martinez and Ms. Owens, and I, I think obviously one of the, one of the biggest, one of the biggest things that, as county officials in the county is that we protect our infrastructure, um, especially the water supply. With that being said, I, I hear your concerns, I understand, we've had this discussion before. Commissioner Duca has requested to have on the agenda for us to have those, um, rumble strips, not the rumble strips, but the, um, speed bumps, sorry, I was lost for words. Um, and we've discussed about having signs out there. Um, what I'm going to recommend to the court is that, um, they authorize me to, um, seek legal counsel so that we can possibly entertain passing an ordinance, a counting ordinance, um, that will prevent the 18-wheelers from having to park in that specific area of Corizo Hill. Um, and if we are able to pass that ordinance, uh, we do have a code enforcer, we do have the sheriff's office to enforce those laws. Um, I wish I could give you a quick answer right now and tell you that we're going to go and do that right now, but I would like to follow up with legal so that we, um, can make sure that we're doing the process properly so that we can put it before commissioner's court, um, because I think it's important that the infrastructure, um, for the water supply in that area, um, is kept up to par. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to request the commissioner's court to table this item and give me an opportunity to seek legal counsel, to see what are the proper steps that we need to ascertain so that we can pass an ordinance so that it can assist you all with your infrastructure, but at the same time assist Commissioner Duca, since she does cover that precinct.
Sure.
And Commissioner Urenda, yes, ma'am?
Um, one more thing I'd like to request is maybe, um, if there is a chance it might be approved, to not have time limits on your signage, because I could easily park and say, okay, I've only been here an hour. We don't want to be policing our streets. That's something that y'all would consider.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Mr. Rosales, the only thing wrong that I see with this request is they're requesting to protect their, their water lines and sewer, but it's not belong to the county. So I think it needs to be written to where it says county roads, correct? The water lines are not, not the county, is that they will also a private section of, of Corizo Street, uh, Corizo Hill?
I came on shortly after the fact, when that water system was put on, there was, uh, private easements obtained from each of the landowners in order to set up the infrastructure, the sewage and the water. Now, whatever action the court wishes to take, I understand that they may be on, on county property, but they may also still be required at the current time, if there's any, uh, digging or so forth, to seek county approval and get the proper permits under our existing, uh, permit laws. I, I don't see any harm in, in marking these, uh, these easements and putting up no parking signs until we have a more appropriate solution. You know, if, uh, the Corizo Hill water system will work with the county in identifying these easements, and we could put up signs like we've done on our, some of our county roads, uh, one example is Old Eagle Pass Highway, where we don't allow 18-wheelers to go through there or park there, because we had that problem of them turning up at new road that we put in. So, uh, that may be one simple solution at this time. Let's, you know, oil bill companies mark their easements, and they have the orange poles or something, you know? I don't, I've never seen anything like that for the Corizo Hill water system, identifying this is an easement, no parking, something to that effect, so that people are more careful whether parking their 18-wheelers or other means of transportation for their employment. So, uh, that's one recommendation I could make at this time, uh, you know, where we could assist them in that aspect, because as it is now, if they're getting damaged and it becomes an emergency situation, we may have to, uh, involve our emergency management and help them assist with those repairs. And, and, uh, we also need to remember that, I believe, when these grants were first obtained, it was through the assistance of the county as well. So the county has, uh, you know, at least, some say so, and how these, these easements should be maintained. So I know that some of the commissioners have these machines that can make these, these signs, and maybe we need to start identifying, putting up signs, no parking here because of existing water systems or, or sewer easements and so forth. Maybe that will help solve the problem as well. I hope I answered your question, Commissioner.
Um, if, um, the court is going to request easements, that has to be on record once that, that grant was put in?
No, the easements are already on record, man.
Okay. So I'm, I know, but I'm saying that if, if we need to write easements, I know that they're on record.
No, they're already there, all we got to do is identify and so we can put up the signs.
Essentially, Ms. Martinez, essentially, Ms. Martinez, what he's saying is that maybe we can work together with Commissioner Duca or Commissioner Urenda and see exactly where these easements are, they are already on record, they have to be on record.
We don't have them.
Okay, well, we can try to see, we can pull them out of the district clerk's, uh, county clerk's files, excuse me?
I know, we could get a copy of that, it would be perfect, because we've looked through our records, uh, within so many years, and then, and the, uh, the place that we're located now was initially not there. And I think Becky inherited, how long have you been there? Yeah, she inherited, uh, all records, and we've gone through them, there's, there's...
You may want to check at the county clerk's office, Ms. Becky? At the county clerk's office, you may want to check through their files, um, because any, any property deeds or anything like that needs, they normally will be filed with the county clerk's office, and getting those files and identi- And getting those files and identifying where those easements are so that you can get in conjunction with Commissioner Nubukaba or Commissioner Odena so that you can recognize where those are and we can put up signs temporary, right for right now, saying no parking zone to see if that deters your 18-wheelers from parking there until we can have a better answer in terms of actually moving forward and voting and entertaining a county ordinance to where it makes it now illegal to park there.
Um, if I may ask Commissioner Odena a question, um, was it hard to add signage to Odena Loop where there's no 18-wheelers passing through there?
That was, uh, that was a, um, an item that was proposed by the former Commissioner. During a time when the, uh, mag camp opened in the back and there was a lot of, uh, oversight equipment going through there, which, as you may know, is not wide enough for two paths to be able to.
So what was their concern? Just the road or?
The concern was that, uh, it, uh, there was two actual accidents on 83. Because my understanding is somebody's trying to exit within the loop and somebody's trying to enter. The driver is not even wide enough to allow two people to transport either way.
Okay.
So that one on 83 had to stop and he got rear-ended.
There was another concern that part of what we were entering was private road.
Correct.
And, uh, private easement and they didn't have permission and then they were entering into our county road that we maintain. So that's the reason they prohibited the 18-wheelers also because it wasn't wide enough and so. Now, on the easements that you're looking for, it was under the County Judge, probably Johnson administration and the J.B. Davis, uh, was County Attorney that repaired the easements for the waters.
So according to, therefore, you all can get together and try to hold on to them.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Odena. Any further discussion?
Judge, I have one complaint that I haven't heard mentioned, but another source would be the model subdivision rules.
Would that be on record that we can get?
Should.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. All in favor? Thank you, ladies. You have a good day.
I also had another issue. I hope it's on there as far as, uh, we have requested, um, funding through grants. Is that listed or do we touch that, touch base?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So you might want to get rid of that other page.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Yes. 3.4, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Discussion on Rental for Fire Station Building for Activities Other Than Firefighting. Is that your?
Currently, they're having activities at the fire station other than firefighting activities. And that was one of the things that needed to be brought up. It needs to come to the Court where they're going to allow other activities other than firefighting. And second, any, if there's any activity going on that isn't county business, that building needs to be, they need to pay a fee for that, just like any rental of the arena or any facility. So those are the two things that you all need to take into consideration or take in and act on is, one, do you want it to be rented out? And second, if you do, then you all need to set a fee for that and I guess rent it like everything else.
Judge, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Odena.
Renad, you read that out. I'm personally not against the idea for whatever our community needs to use it. But my question to you is, is it allowed to be used for other than emergency response? My question, do you know that?
We, this discussion was made back when the, and I think we took action on it, Commissioners' Court.
We don't have anything on record.
Because, uh, it was brought up to the Commissioners and it got to say where it was, yes, you can use it and all we had to do was a waiver. We have the waiver and it's been used probably for the past four years or so.
Wait, that, uh.
Because the definition of that was it was serving a public use for taxpayers.
But you can't, you can't.
I know, I understand. I'm just explaining what was said, what was said back then.
There's nothing on record that we could find.
Again, I'm just explaining what we were discussing out here, you know. I'm not arguing.
Your recommendation.
So what is?
That would be up to you all.
It would be up to.
Well, first of all, do you know what?
Yes, it's up to the Court. It's up to the Court.
The reason I'm asking is because I'm just worried that once we start renting it out, what liability does the county have? Let me tell you why. They had, they had a plate cell on Thursday, okay? Not this Thursday, but there were a whole bunch of children running around. Somebody's going to get hurt. That's why I said, we weren't renting it, so we were liable, but now we're going to rent it, so what's the effect?
Well, actually, you are liable regardless, whether you rented out or not.
Correct. We're always liable, Commissioners. We're always liable.
That's county property.
In county property.
So that's, that's the decision you all need to make. Do you want to rent it? Or if you don't, then you did, you can't.
That's the only thing I'm looking at, the liability. Some of the people running around. I was afraid that they were going to fall out of their cell.
There's always liability, even when we rent out the rodeo arena and there's a quinceañera. There's a wedding and there's kids running around. I mean.
The difference there just, I may add is that that arena is designed so much, so much for entertainment. This is a fire station.
Correct.
We're looking at two different setups.
Two statements. It's a two different setups. You're talking about trucks, equipment, tools
versus a rodeo arena that is open with tables and chairs. You're going to, I understand, you're going to have kids running around. Kids will be kids. And you're talking about two very different setups.
Can you say that to say what?
I'm just, that's my concern. I'm stating my concern as I previously said. This is a fire station. It's considered an emergency response. So let's put a scenario together. It's never happened on kids. It's ever happened if you're having a bad event, so. You get a call or a response. And if we're having to rush, why don't the record?
The trucks are out of the way. The trucks are not in the bay when they're having their. The trucks are set up along the fence. Uh, the equipment, the bags have used along the fence. Uh, so there's no vehicles inside the fire station. The only two is the one that, the only one vehicle, the only aisle that's taken is for the truck that have to be supplied by power. We've been blessed where nothing has gone wrong. I'm not saying that it won't happen. But when the firemen arrive, they know they're designated parking. They don't come into the station as judge been there before. We have had calls. We park over there by the mailbox. We get on our trucks and we leave. There's nobody nearby. But it's up to the Court if they want to stop, we can stop and if want to charge, we can charge it.
I have a question. Is yours actually being considered the equipment that's there? And if they're able to get to their playoff.
We get to it right away.
Okay, when you say charge, if we've been down a fee of $20, okay? We have benefit in other sections of the county and we bring down the price because it's a benefit. Correct? So we can do the same thing here, right?
We can charge whatever we think is appropriate and if we think $20 is appropriate, then we, we charge $20.
If somebody comes up and wants to rent it and say $20, okay, fine. But I just, a lot of the places that were used, that they used, sometimes they don't charge them and they still use it. So that's my concern.
What do you mean they don't charge them? They charge based on the, on the fees that we approved. What do you mean they don't charge them?
Yeah, but sometimes there's something going on and we're not even aware of it and they pay.
Ms. Ronhan comes every, when she brings her, her report every month and it has it on there?
Right, but when we agreed for the sunball or baseball or whatever.
They pay.
To use it.
They pay.
And so, but sometimes they don't.
Judge.
That's what I'm saying.
Mr., most of the fundraisers, most of the fundraisers we have, it's not for, for schools or for medical. People that are trying to subraise some money. And I know what you're saying, but again, uh, we've done it for the past four years. Now, if the judge decides, if we decide.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like y'all have been digging grapes for a million years and everything wants to be changed out. I don't understand it. I'm going to propose and you can vote against me if you want.
My motion is to charge $10.
That was going to be my motion.
We've done it before with several of the other facilities in the county. Figure expenses, we rent the.
$10, correct.
$10 is my motion.
The, the, the motion is to charge $10 to utilize the rental fire station for fundraising. I'm not even going to say fundraising, Commissioner. It's just going to be for any event in which the fire station needs to be utilized at, at a rate of $10. Do you, do you, do they use that facility for other events besides bake sales and plate sales? Because we need to be specific. So Commissioner Nubukaba, I'm going to inquire from you if your motion is going to be specifically to where the $10 fee is and the usage of the fire station building to be used solely for food benefit fundraisers in regards to plate sales slash bake sales. No other events. No, but the last time you weren't here, they requested, um, for it to be used for a car wash and we tabled it. We didn't. So legally speaking and for us in terms of how we're going to utilize the fire station, is I would prefer for the motion to be specific as to the $10 is going to be a rental fee for only, um, bake sales or plate sales.
Not to do that washes?
No, you can recommend it, but here's, here's my problem and discussion is open. Uh, before you vote, and I'm going to oppose to letting the public use it for, you know, uh, benefits if they need it. And I've assisted in some benefits out there myself, I'll be honest. But, uh, the issue of liability has come up. I think that before we set a fee and start allowing any further rental, we need to check with our insurance company. Make sure we're not voiding our insurance by renting, uh, this facility out and.
The reason why we're here today, Mr. Gert Gonzalez, is because our insurance agency contacted Mr. Pereda and told him that we needed to charge. So that's why.
If it's okay, just charge it and it's not going to avoid our, avoid our insurance. If there's a claim during one of these benefits, then I have no problem. But we need to get that in writing from them so that if there's an issue in the future, we say, hey, we consulted with you guys and you said it was okay to do this.
They need to sign the same thing they do for the arena.
Yeah, it's a waiver.
And a waiver, that?
Incorrect.
That would satisfy insurance company?
Yes.
I do want to make a comment on what Commissioner Carmona says. If, the only time you're going to charge on, let's suppose a baseball field, is when you're going to specifically rent it out or somebody's coming in, I want it from me. If you have it open to whoever wants to show up, that is public purpose. So there is a difference in having practice whoever shows up than to saying, okay, I want that hour for me, then it changes it. So that's why you can, anybody can use it whenever they want to, but once the moment that you come in and say.
Oh, anybody can use what, facilities?
The baseball park, you're talking.
It's kind of like the Joaquín Sangado. Anybody can use it. They put their quarters at night.
No, no, I understand, but you just mentioned.
There's no charge on the park.
But you mentioned a while ago that the baseball park, that some people don't get charged. Well, those are the people that get charged, the people that show up to practice.
So I'm breaking the law then if I got it all locked up?
Correct. If you're going to use it specifically for you.
We need to get back to the fire station. No, we need to get back to the fire station.
You missed it.
Well, I'm going to open up the gates then.
We need to get back.
What's that, Commissioner? What's that?
You're just saying you need to charge for it. Now you're saying.
Again, I'm going to reiterate, Commissioner Nubukaba, your motion is going to be to charge a $10 rental fee for the fire station for events limited to bake sales and plate sales, correct? You got that, Mr. Garcia? I have a motion by Commissioner Nubukaba.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any further discussion?
Judge, I can add also, uh, just for the record that, uh, the fire station is also a designated polling place for 156.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. 3.5, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from County Extension Agent Ms. Alyssa Cruz for the month of June and July 2024.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner.
The other ones, Carisas. This is Alyssa's. The ones you have in your packet are Carisas. Alyssa's just turned hers in right now. Alyssa, yes.
The task, you'll find both of my reports and I also included, uh, three separate flyers. Uh, one will be a Hunter's Education Course for youth ages nine and up. Um, under the age of 16 will have to be accompanied by an adult. Um, and that one will be at the arena. Um, I also attached a pesticide applicator training for those interested or needing their pesticide applicator license. Um, so that one's included in there as well. And also August 15 will be having the 4H kickoff event, uh, for, open to the community for any kids that are interested in learning about 4H and the different projects we offer.
And the Hunter Education Course, would that qualify them to get their license or?
Yes, it's a, it's a training for the UPS.
You can get your license right now, but in your report after 1972, you're required to have a Hunter Education Course.
Any questions of Ms. Alyssa Cruz?
Moving to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nubukaba. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 3.6, Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval, excuse me. Monthly Report from FCH Agent Ms. Carisamunios for the month of May, June, and July.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Along with the events that are going on, um, that Ms. Alyssa just mentioned, uh, we would love to see you at the Back to School Health Fair. I'm pretty sure a few of you will probably have a table, but it'll be this Friday from 9:2.
What is that?
The Back to School Health Fair.
Oh, yes.
Caris, what is, Ms. Munios, what is this? Diabetes education training? Or that's for you or, oh, it's not for the public?
Um, they are giving us some more state trainings every month and that's one scheduled for this month because we will be having some diabetes education classes starting in November.
Any questions of Ms. Munios? I have a motion by Commissioner Nubukaba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Munios. 3.7, Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Reimbursement for FCH Agent Carisamunios and Extension Clerk Victoria Garcia for attending the 2024 Dimon County Program Planning Office Retreat, July 12th in San Antonio, Texas.
So this is, uh, something new that we started with our office. We're going to be having like a program planning and training sessions every year. Um, and we didn't have time to put it in the agenda for approval, so that's why we're putting it now for reimbursement.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second. Second by Commissioner Du Lacava. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. 3.8 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Rodeo Arena Event Coordinator, Ms. Jasmine Ronhead, for the month of May, June, and July.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Any questions of Ms. Ronhead?
Judge, I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the golf course, we ran it out to the right, so who does the booking for the?
Ms. Hyman.
So the fee should be on her report?
It should be on her report.
They're on her report. But there's different fees or different sections for the golf.
Other questions?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, who is my second? Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ronhead. 3.9 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 2, Mr. Andres Aragula, Joey Rivera, for the month of May, June, and July.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Questions of Mr. Constable Aragula?
Constable, is this your report?
That is correct. Is that the, this is last month, Mr. Rivera did not work, I had the unit in Eagle Pass, there at the same, at the Mavericks. On this month, yeah. The previous month, his report's on there.
We only have one report. We only have July, we don't have June. We don't have May or June. You submitted those?
Yes. The last month is when we went to the training for the week, so we weren't here for the sales table, but they were in the packet.
Other questions of Constable Aragula? Motion by Commissioner Du Lacava, is there a second?
Question?
Yes.
Who seconded?
Well, is it Commissioner?
Commissioner Urenda, discussion?
When you do these evictions, is it fair to put their names on, or can you just put eviction? On your report?
On my report, I just put the first initial and then the last name. I did not put the full name for privacy reasons. But we can't, I can't just put eviction.
I mean, it's public record, they can go to the JP's and find out.
But usually, I just put the first initial, then just the last name. On some of them, I just put eviction.
Okay.
But if there's any report, they can have it either way.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
3.10 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 3, Mr. Robert Valderas Joventino Torres, for the month of June and July 2024.
Morning.
Morning. It's Joventino, full time?
Yes.
Other questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 1, Mr. Alfred Castaneda, for the month of June and July 2024.
Morning.
Morning. Questions of Constable Castaneda?
Motion to.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 4, Mr. Jose Galván, for the month of June and July.
Morning, Judge.
Morning. Questions for Mr. Galván? If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. 3.13 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Dimon County Golf Course for the month of May, June, and July 2024.
Good morning.
Morning, Ms. Hyman.
Is your printer off?
Is your printer off? Because half the numbers are.
Which one was that? June?
This is the brand of green.
No, mine, mine is good. Questions of Ms. Hyman? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hyman. 3.14 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval of Airport Quarterly Report for the months of April, May, and June 2024. Good morning, Mr. Martinez. Questions for Mr. Martinez? There are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
I almost could see, I don't have tabled it back then, like the construction with the airport practicing and stuff. I think it was tabled in June, and it was supposed to be back. It was off in July, and then it was supposed to be back this month, but it wasn't.
Yeah, I don't see it on there. Mr. Martinez, can you follow up with Ms. Hernandez so she can put it on the agenda item for August 15?
The thing is, the deadlines are 31st, which I have to have it invoiced by August 31st, so I don't know how, the next meeting will be the?
August 15.
August 15?
Yes. That should suffice, right? That should give you sufficient time?
It should, yeah, I'll talk to the contractor, see, as soon as he gets it okayed, then I'll.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. 3.15 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval of Checklist for November 5, 2024. Let me see, I make sure I run out of breath, Mr. Garcia. Approval of Checklist for November 5, 2024, General Elections, Publications, Election Order, Election Notices, Notice for Testing Tabulating Equipment, Purchases of Election Related Supplies, Printing, Coding, Official Ballots, Programming, Rite of Election and Number of Clerks for Precinct to Work, Election Day, Hiring Deputy Early Voting Clerks, Early Voting Ballot Board, and Central Counting Station, and Hourly Wage of $15, and Authorization to Open the Historic Courthouse for Extended Voting Hours and Voting Hours on Weekend, and Authorization to Request Law Enforcement Present in Any Election Administrative Venue. Let me catch my breath. Mr. Garcia, what in particular are you asking this court to approve?
Everything that it just mentioned, Judge. One thing I do want to add, and it brought on all the discussion about ADA compliance, although the courthouse is the polling place of Precinct 1, and I know for a fact that the Elections Division really handles down on ADA compliance.
Correct.
Of course, my use of the second floor, which we, nobody holds up there, in other words, but we do use that.
Tabulation.
In the event that we have, we use one of the smaller offices on the first floor. But just to be safe, I'm going to send in a name for a little.
Thank you.
Other than that, everything that's listed there.
And just to clarify, there's, is there elections for the school district as well?
Yes.
So will they be incurring the cost with us?
Yes.
Are we splitting the cost?
Fifty-fifty.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It'll be in the agenda item for next meeting.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And in regards to the number of clerks for precinct to work, you don't, I don't see where you have a specific number, is that going to be at your discretion, or what are you doing there?
I would agree that that particular one, that because I need your signature on the writ of election, have any prospects come in, so I'll work on that.
Okay. Other questions? Other questions? Can I entertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to, Approval for County Clerk Mr. Mario Garcia and Deputy Clerk Verlinda Sandoval Sally Flores to attend the 42nd Secretary of State Annual Election Seminar, August 11th through the 14th in Austin, Texas. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava. All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.16, 3.17, excuse me, Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Deputy Clerk Vanessa Rosas to Attend Identical Fingerprinting on July 23rd and August 1st in Uvalde, Texas. Is this a reimbursement, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, ma'am. She, the first time, the date that they ever set up for that, it was closed, was she having a date?
So she's asking reimbursement for?
Asking for reimbursement, yes.
I know, but for two days or one day?
I believe it's two.
I'm confused with the amounts of the way. Are you looking at the amounts? It doesn't write? She only has it for one day? I only see an attachment, Mr. Garcia, for one, the one day that she actually attended, not the one that they were, they were closed? For auditing purposes, for the mileage? Because she put in for mileage for the day that she went and they were closed, and then she put in another mileage for the second time she went and they were closed, but her backup only has it for one day. And I have the amount at $124.
There's only one backup missing.
Any other questions? $162.25 is a total. $162.25. I was going, I was going based off this backup she submitted. I know, that's why Commissioner Du Lacava said it didn't show the mileage either for the one, based on what she turned in. Do, I have a motion based on the changes that were made, or did you guys want to table this item?
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.18 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Elected Officials Increase for 2024, 2025. Here you go, Commissioner Du Lacava. Commissioner Alonso. And Commissioner. Commissioner what? You have before you. You have before you commissioners the proposed budget elected officials increase based on the budget workshops that I've met with the elected officials. Based on the conversations that I've had with each commissioner when they came for the budget workshop. As you can see, there's a 5% increase on the elected officials' positions. With the exception of, um... One of the... One or two of the precincts. This is... In order for there to be any increases, they must be advertised for a week in the newspaper before the budget proposal is submitted to the clerk's office. So we have to put that on the paper for this week. These are the increases. Are there any questions? And like I said, this does reflect a 5% increase. And an increase on... If they're not on this... If they're not on this document, it's because there's not an increase in that position. Are there questions of the proposed salaries for elected officials? Or changes?
So to be 5% increase.
5% increase, Commissioner Duwukawa. Are there any questions, changes, additions? If there is not any changes, questions, or additions, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Orenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
We have one opposition. And that's Commissioner Duwukawa. Motion carries. 3.19 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval of 2024 County of Dimmitt Tax Rate Worksheets. Mr. Pereira, is this item you were talking to me about?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and request that we go into executive session. Yes, ma'am. $10 and $1.50. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Duwukawa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.21 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Tax Assessor Collector Mary Sandoval and Chief Deputy De Zepeda to attend the 42... Excuse me, the 42nd Texas Secretary of State Annual Election Seminar, August 11th through the 14th in Austin, Texas. Miss Sandoval, when are you guys leaving?
Sunday.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carmona. Second by Commissioner Duwukawa. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Miss Sandoval.
Thank you.
3.22 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Accept Donation from Textile for the Rap Material Coming from FM 186 to be piled on Precinct 1 Yard.
Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Duwukawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. This item was put on here as a formality, correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.23 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Accept Donation from CSA for the Deep Freezer to be placed on East Field Concession Stand. Again, commissioners, this is a formality. The CSA has donated the deep freezer for the Alaves Field. Just needed to put it on the agenda as a formality. Motion by Commissioner Duwukawa. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.24 Discussion and Appropriate Action Discuss Several Issues Concerning the Old Courthouse, such as the elevator, air conditioning, walls coming apart, precinct two.
Judges, as I wrote this letter, it's stating the concerns that there is at the courthouse from deteriorating and the walls crack. Do you want me to read it?
I can read it.
Okay. The walls are coming apart. The air conditions are failing, security concerns, and also the overcrowding. As you... As we mentioned earlier...
You're talking about for the district judge?
Yeah, the district judge, 360 feet, currently being held here. I was asking if a recommendation for the... Commissioners are solution to take care of this problem.
I come to historical courthouse and they have an issue after issue for the past several years. What do we need to do? Or I said just, I mean, to close it down? What do we need to do to let the Historical Committee know all these issues are going on? It's been going on for a while. Either to close it down, buy them a different building, get them a different building. It's affecting all of them in that courthouse. It's affecting Mr. Garcia, it's affecting Mr. Gonzalez, and it's affecting, of course, the district judge. But not only that, it's creating a big liability on the county because it's still being used by everybody.
I agree. I think that we need to have those conversations with the... With the Historical Commission. I have discussed with Mr. Pereira options in trying to either use whatever remainder seals we may have to build a building that will provide offices for the departments that are there already. In addition to that, in order for us to do any major repairs, as you are well aware, we have to go through the Historical Commission because it's a historical building and we're not allowed to do any kind of renovations without their approval, unfortunately. I agree that there is a lot of problems. I went... When I went Friday with Ms. Madi into that room, I don't know what room it was, Ms. Madi, and the walls are like... The bottom of the wall was... I mean, you put pictures on here. And so I think moving forward, we definitely need to look at our options in regards to, is it going to be effective and efficient to remain in that building? Or is it going to be reasonable and safer to just either construct a new building or buy a building somewhere else to place those businesses there? There is... Has been some options that have came. And I've also spoken to Mr. Pereira to speak to the school district because there is some buildings around the courthouse that may be used that belong to the school. So we're looking into that. But in terms of right now, right now, to address Commissioner Carmona's concerns with his letter, I think the best way to go about it, for us to do this rapidly and expeditiously, we need to contact the Historical Commission so that we can go before them, so that they can grant us permission to make these changes that need to be made by repairing the elevator, repairing the roof, repairing the air conditioner. Because those are... Those are considered changes to the actual structure of the building, and we have to have permission to do those, unfortunately. So, um... I mean, this, I think, falls... Right now is more of a discussion, more than any kind of approval. It's just to have the discussion and, I guess, authorize you and either my office to contact the Historical Commission so that we can start the process on what we need to do to repair that building, one. And then, two, just going out and looking for maybe other avenues that you may have or that you might know of, or anybody here may know about purchasing either a building or constructing one.
I suggest since Petrie's for sale, it's already there. Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Garcia, if their stuff fits in there. I mean, for the meantime, because this is going to cause more problems and more issues, we're just waiting for a lawsuit to happen. Before you know it, it's going to happen. Now that the grant, we've been waiting that grant to be approved, but we're working, I mean, $500,000 is still a lot of money, but, okay, they already said, no, we didn't get it. Hey, let's move on. We have funding to do it, we need to get it going, we need to fix this. We've been waiting on it, we've been...
Well, we need to fix it, that's without saying.
And we can move them. If we... I mean, we can purchase that and wait until we build them a new building or new facilities. But for now, there's... I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just...
We have...
...here, but there's Petrie's building right there.
We have KO building there also. We can make a small office there for at least one department.
Nobody fits in that department, sir. I mean, it's like a... It's too small.
Is, um... I have a question. Is there water underneath that building?
Under what building?
Under the historical building.
There's probably water, rats, dogs, cats, everything in there.
There's water underneath that building. If we don't figure out how to get rid of that, we're just putting a band-aid over it, maybe a tuck.
I agree with you.
This... This what we're looking at? Is moisture trying to find its way out?
Of course. I mean, literally, I mean, look at how the walls look.
And that probably was caused by electrical issues. And once you're going through the walls, the AC issues. And I'm surprised that there hasn't been anybody playing about mold or anything else in that building. So as long as there's water underneath that building, we can keep painting it and patching it and putting a new everything in. We'll be in here again talking about it in a couple of years.
That's what I'm saying. We need to call and get on the block, call the Historical Committee over Austin and see what we can do to close it down until it's...
Never have it condemned.
Condemned. And no one can use that building.
I mean, safety over...
So, Commissioner, we're not going to take no action, but I would just highly recommend that you get with the Historical Commission. If you need my assistance, please advise me and I'll be more than happy to help you. 3.25 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Purchase a John Deere 3033R Tractor and with rotary cutter for the land field.
We have to be needed tractor with the shredder on it to cut the rest of the land field. We have seals to purchase it. It's by board.
You have seals still?
Yes, ma'am.
All three of them are by board? Oh, I'm looking at the wrong thing.
The Haci, that was tabled last official court. I put in the agenda and it was...
It's not on the agenda.
It's not placed, so the one in the back. I'll bring that one back.
Okay. Just let Ms. Hernandez know.
Yes. For the Texas rag equipment with the shredder and the tractor.
The Kubota?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is a... By board?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me?
345.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.1 Discussion and Appropriate Act... Excuse me. Appropriate Action Purchase of Five-Molded Rugged Bathtub Accessories Through the Operation Stone Garden FY 23 Grant 3058, 3045008. Sheriff, this is by board?
I have no idea. This is done by Sadina. I would just give this a day. I know they brought it back before. Did it have a backup?
Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is by board. It is by-board. On the, I just saw that right now, where did I see that? I thought I saw it by-board. Mr. Pereira, this by-board, this is what they purchased before, right?
Yeah, we have, but it doesn't need to be because $70,000, so all it would do, it doesn't need to be empty because-
Yeah.
I'm not asking to advertise, I just don't have pre-vo for it.
Well, that's, you know, I think she's already got it. Yes, this is the only thing, we didn't have the last time, the backup.
I remember.
So it's previously been the commissioner's work with the backup.
Further discussion?
Because I think we need the grant, you don't have to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.2, discussion and appropriate action, approval for Cynthia Montes and Mariselda Hernandez to attend the Texas Jail Association Convention Center, September 9th through the 13th in Galveston, Texas.
Good morning.
And that trade was recommended by Jill Stan, who's also at Bill of Tim.
Ms. Montes, on your, on your travel voucher, you put for five nights.
We leave in Sunday and we come back Friday.
I know, but you put 359, 239, I don't know.
Oh, because one of the days is going to cost 259 and another one 239.
You guys are not taking county vehicles?
No, ma'am.
Question, other questions? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lucav, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, jail status?
On the jail status, Judge, I put for the next commission support, the building budget for the half, the whole month of the building. So I don't know if you want it right now or you're going to wait till the next commission support.
On here for the jail report, you have pending on everything?
Yes, because I have, I have it here, but I didn't give it to you.
Well, I'm at a table, a motion to table it.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll put you on the, Ms. Hernandez, make sure we put her on the next agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Ms. Hernandez from my office.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have some, thank you.
It's okay. 5.1, discussion and appropriate action to award bids for telephone services.
These are the new phone bids.
This is a new phone bid?
Yes, ma'am.
Mark, yeah, Mr. Mendez, I have a question. I see on here, on the contact name, it says Legacy Hellofox, I thought we weren't going to go with them anymore.
Oh, yes, no, this is the, this is Hellofox, how much they're charging us right now.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so they're charging us $7,000 a month for the phones, and that comes out to about $84,000 a year. With this new one, it'll be $74,000 for three years, actually. But there is a one-time fee of $15,000 for the phones itself, $34,000 for the configuration.
$15,000 for the phones and $34,000?
Yeah, the physical phones itself, $34,000 for the configuration for the phones and $55,000 for the contract itself.
The $55,000 is for a year, or?
No, $55,000 for three years. And then it's also $19,000 for the call tower, which is like a server, but it's for the whole county, so it comes out to around $74,000.
So $123,000 for three years?
Yes, for a one-time fee, though. After that, we don't pay the configuration fee no more or for the physical phones. It's just for three-year contract fee for the phones and then a three-year contract fee for the call tower, compared to $84,000 for one year. And it is unlimited phones as well.
Are there any questions?
$124,000 for this one-time fee, but after this one-time fee, it'll only be $74,000.
To your job.
Yes, from 74 to 84 for three years compared to one.
The $123,000 already includes?
Everything.
No, $123,000 is a one-time fee?
Yes, to migrate everything from the phone system we have right now.
Where do we have those numbers at, Mr. Mendez?
Well, those, you kind of have to do them on your own because I did them on my notes.
I know, but I want to see those numbers. You said $19,000, but here you have $1,900.
Oh, yes, because the call tower itself, the contract fee is three years for $19,000, but for the physical server, it's $1,900 to like buy the server. So that's another like fee to add on. It's like buying a computer.
On top, where? Perfect. Are we asking for the remote service contract? Is optional?
Oh, no.
What about this one?
They do have an optional $16,000 fee for them to come and set up the phones, but we can do that ourselves.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Pereira, did you look at this already?
Overall, yes, I just didn't do it in detail.
This also includes e-faxing as well. We already had e-faxing, but this one also includes it as well.
Any other questions? Here you go, Mr. Mendez. I'll entertain a motion. And when will this go into effect, Mr. Mendez?
As soon as you approve it.
So just for the record and so that the public will know, is there going to be a turnover period in which the phone lines will be down for a bit so that if people or constituents are trying to contact anybody or businesses or organizations, that we will be having some kind of turnover period where the phones will not be working?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's that?
It would be one day at most, just to migrate that, that full day, we would migrate from this one. And if there is any downtime, we have let you know that possibly that one day would migrate over.
And that would be for the entire county?
Yes, ma'am.
To include the sheriff's office?
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll be with no phone services for a day?
Yes, or like up and down, like trying to get it off, migrate it over.
I'll entertain a motion to award the telephone service bid to Flexile Systems and to allow the county judge to sign and authorize the signature. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
And we have one abstention, which is Commissioner Lucav. Thank you, Mr. Mendez. 5.2, discussion and appropriate action to open bids for sports complex. We have three bids? I guess this won't hurt after all, it's worthless. Scissors, Mr. Garcia?
Look it back to you.
Or a knife, maybe? Okay, at this time, I'm just going to put on the record what the bid proposal is. We are not going to award bids today to this simply just to open the bids and put on the record. If I look at Table of Contents, Tab 2, Bid Proposal Form, that's the bid proposal, right, Mr. Caza? That will be for Spa Blast out of Selma, Texas, in the amount of $20,681 and $454. I have a bid from Catamount.
Can you spell that, Judge?
Yes, I sure can. That is $20,620 and $89. San Antonio, Texas. Well, they have a bunch of different companies, but this one was submitted out of the San Antonio office. And the last bid comes in from Zap, Zapalac. Hardly slaughtering that name, but Z-A-P-A-L-A-C Reed Construction out of Bee Cave, Texas. That is 23,497 dollars. Any questions? We received three bids, those are the three bids. Again, those are just, it was just a formality to open up the bids. Today, there will be no action taken on who the project will be awarded to. 5.3, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval to Contract with Hardy for Repair of the Roof at Metal Rio Grande and Dollar General. As you guys are well aware, um... Excuse me. I know, I'm gonna... Take this item off, Mr. Garcia, this item needed to be on the Public Facilities Agenda. So no action. 5.1, Discussion and Appropriate Action to Hire Patio Brown and Hill for the TCEQ Audit at the landfill. As you guys are well aware, we do have to have audits made for the landfill due to regulations with TCEQ. So we need to put this item to authorize myself and Mr. Pereira to contract with Patio Brown and Hill to do that TCEQ audit for the landfill. Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda. Are there any questions? There are no questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.5, Discussion and Approval for County Auditor Carlos Pereira to Attend the Legislative Conference, August 28th through 30th, in Austin, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Urra, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.6, Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment, Parks and Recreation. Is this out of my Parks and Recreation?
Yes, but it's from the operating supplies.
I know, but for what, for... Oh, for the concessions? Now entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.7, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Budget Adjustment Number 85 for Road and Bridge Breacing 4. That's yours, Commissioner.
To move money to appropriate care, maintenance, repair, to cover utility expenses, operating supplies, and capital equipment.
Are there any questions?
Aye.
Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.8, Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number 86 in Metro.
To move money to cover expenses for uniforms, operating expense, and fuel.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.9, Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Number 87 for Sanitation Department.
To move money to cover the fuel, the oil, the tanks, and the containers.
Aye. On the sanitation, when do you think we could get a report on the sanitation?
Last time that you asked, I had said on a quarterly basis, so it's due next month.
Utilities, 48,930 dollars and 3 cents. A rodeo arena, 765. Stone Garden, 26,926 dollars and 28 cents. Operation Lone Star, 8,965 and 98 cents. Demet County Payroll, 479,717 and 15 cents. Interest and sinking, 11,700... 11 million? 11,768,392 dollars and 32 cents. COs 2020, 16,599. COs 2022, 3,540, for a total of 13,68,149 dollars and 11 cents. Questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I'll entertain a re, a motion to recess and adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Urra, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. This meeting has ended, the time is 12:51. The time is 12:51, Mr. Garcia, and I'm calling the Public Facilities Meeting to Order. 1.2, Roll Call, let the record reflect that all parties are still present with the exception of one absence, that is, Mr. Juan Carmona. 1.3, Approval of Minutes, a Regular Meeting, July 15, 2024. Subject to any corrections. Motion by Commissioner Urra, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1, Discussion and Appropriate Action, New Business. I'll take, entertain a motion to table, Commissioner Juan's not here. Motion by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urra. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.1, Claim Jockey, Public Safety, 6,509 dollars and 25 cents. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urra, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the Public Facilities Meeting. Motion by Commissioner Urra, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lotso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
The time's 12:53, and this meeting is over, thank you.